Good morning, everyone. We are going to start our September 23rd special meeting first before we go into our workshop. So this meeting has been called to order. And would you please stand with me for the pledge allegiance? We'll remain standing for the kids at hope as well.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an adult, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exists with all children in youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you so much for making the seat. Welcome again to the meeting, and it looks like we have the entire mental health department here, which is a good thing. We will cover some items this morning in the special meeting up under the human resource, and there are several ones that we want to vote for board members. So at this time, we will start with that. Our letter of understanding regarding dispersment of 2025-2026 teacher salary increase allocation. Superintendent, may we have your recommendation on this?
I recommend the board approve the letter of understanding between St. Lucie Public Schools and the Education Association of St. Lucie Classroom Teachers Association regarding the dispersment of funds specifically allocated by the state of Florida for teacher salary increases for the 25-26 school year.
Board member, you heard the superintendent's recommendation. May I have a motion, please? So move Mr. Ingersoll in a second. So move by Ms. Harley. Any discussion board members on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? This motion carries four zero. Okay, we're going to next go to the letter of understanding regarding our health insurance for 2025-2026 with ESO. Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the letter of understanding between St. Lucie Public Schools and the Education Association of St. Lucie regarding health insurance for the 2025-26 school year.
Superintendent's made a recommendation on this item. May I have a motion? In a second. Moved by Mr. Ingersoll, second by Ms. Harley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Our next item up is the letter of understanding regarding health insurance for CWA for 2025-2026. Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the letter of understanding between St. Lucie Public Schools and the Communication Workers of America Local 3181 regarding health insurance for the 2025-26 school year.
Board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. May I have a motion? So move Mr. Ingersoll, second, Ms. Harley. Any discussion on the item? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, we have our letter of understanding regarding health insurance 2025-2026, CWA. Superintendent, may I have your recommendation?
A point of note, sorry, Dr. Mills, we just voted on that one. We're on the referendum and recruitment supplement.
Okay, so let me have your recommendation regarding the referendum and recruitment supplement.
I recommend the board approve the letter of understanding between St. Lucie Public Schools and the Education Association of St. Lucie Classroom Teachers Association regarding referendum dollars.
Superintendent's made a recommendation for the letter of understanding regarding referendum and recruitment supplement, ESOL and ESALCTA. Board members, may I have a motion? So move Mr. Ingersoll, second, Ms. Harley. Any discussion, board members? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. We move right along to the letter of understanding regarding teacher compensation with ESALCTA. Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the letter of understanding between St. Lucie Public Schools and the Education Association of St. Lucie CTA regarding teacher compensation for the 2025-26 school year.
Superintendent's recommended the letter of understanding regarding teachers' compensation. Board members, may I have a motion? Second. Moved by Mr. Ingersoll, second by Ms. Harley. Any discussion, board? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Our last item up for vote is the letter of understanding regarding compensation, ESAL, CU, and PROTEC. Superintendent, recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the letter of understanding between St. Lucie Public Schools and the Education Association of St. Lucie, ESO, CU, and PROTEC regarding compensation for the 2025-26 school year.
Superintendent's recommendation is the letter of understanding regarding compensation, and he recommends that we approve this. Board members, may I have a motion? Mr. Ingersoll, so moved, and second by Ms. Harley. Any discussion on the item? All in favor? Any opposed? This motion carries five zero. At this time, we will adjourn our special meeting, and we will open up our September 23rd, 2025 work session for today. So the meeting has been opened up, and now we will discuss our strategic planning. Superintendent, will you take it from here?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Just wanted to say a couple of things before we get rolling for the workshop. First of all, I want to thank our partners at ESO, Mr. Freeland, the union president and his team, for their collaboration and creative problem solving. You know, whenever you go into negotiations, especially collaborative negotiations, you know, we know how much money we have for compensation, and just the creative problem solving that I think the union approached this with. I just want to thank David and his team. I also want to thank our chief negotiator, Dr. Helen Wild. Where are you, doctor?
I'm over here.
Yes, over there, wearing green, new outfit, Dr. Wild. Yes, just happened to pick that up at the store just the other day. But it's very time consuming, negotiations, a lot of thought goes into it. It's an art and a science, and I just want to thank Dr. Wild. She updates me. But it's what we ended up agreeing to was pretty identical to what we talked about in executive session in our private session. I also wanted to thank Mr. O'Leary and Michelle Thomas for their work, you know, behind the scenes and also working with our negotiating team. Dr. Sanchez is the chief negotiator for CWA, and I know we have a meeting tomorrow with regards to compensation. Everything is done with regards to compensation, with the exception of the CWA, but health insurance was agreed to by both parties. And most importantly is the TSIA dollars, which is the teacher salary increase allocation. And the reason why this was on the board agenda was because it is due by October 1st. And I want to thank our union partners for working with us, because if we don't get it done by then, then I end up having to appear before the state board, and I really don't want to do that. So today is really about goal four, goal number one and goal number four, and I want to talk very briefly. You know, we talk about the focus on the core reading and math as our priority in increasing our proficiency in reading and math, but also science and social studies play an important role in that as well. And we've had some huge increases in the performance of our students. Dr. Summer is going to be our first presenter today. He's going to talk a little bit about a number of things, the process we have. We have instructional reviews at all of our schools, but also how we build on last year's gains, the process that we use. He's also going to share some results from PM3. That window closes this Friday, so some students are still testing, but it's not going to, so many students test it already, it's not really going to change that much. But he's going to test, not test, he's going to share that performance with you. And then goal four is really about mental health. You'll see a lot of green behind me. This was placed, this is for mental health. I wore my green today. So we've got a lot of folks here from student services that are represented, and Heather Rowland and Dr. Wild, and they'll introduce some members of their team that are going to be presenting, not just about supports and the things that we do for mental health for students that you might not be aware of, but also some of the supports that are there for our employees, and Dr. Wild is going to be talking about that as well. I have asked them to pause throughout if you have questions. You know, we want to take our time a little bit with some of this stuff, so there is some pause points built in for questions. So without further ado, I will introduce Dr. Craig Summer, our chief of schools. And once again, it's a collaborative process with regards to Dr. Summer and the executive directors of schools that are principal supervisors and our teaching and learning through Denise Rodriguez. I can't compliment Craig enough since he's come here from Palm Beach, is just working, the collaborative work that he's done has made a huge difference, I believe, in the performance of our schools, but just the collaborative nature that he brings to the table with teaching and learning. I appreciate all the work that he's done, so I'll turn it over to Craig and...
Thank you, Dr. Prince, I really appreciate that. Madam Chair, school board, and of course, I got to give a shout out, audience, you guys look fantastic wearing the green. I hope you enjoy the presentation today. So looking at our workshop, our agenda today is somewhat chronological, because we're going to look back at the class of 2025 that just graduated, because they're part of our district grade that we'll get after this school year. We'll look forward to 2026 and at some of our opportunities, and as Dr. Prince just mentioned, our strategies. And then we'll take a look at some baseline data as to where do we start the year. So that's our outline. Jumping in, let's take a quick look back at the class of 2025 that graduated. Was a fantastic summer graduation, and that's the reason why they're not in our district school grade, because they work right up to the start of school after we get our district grade, so it's lagging data in graduation acceleration. We'll take a look at a couple of highlights as well. So these are just projections by school that are district operated, and I'll point you to our grad rates. So if I orientate you to the screen or your handout, you have this slide deck printed, you see by school the 23-24 graduation rate and the 24-25 graduation rate. And then if you look by school, you'll see 23-24 was 97 for Fort Pierce Central High School and 96 for 24-25, a projection which we're being very conservative, which is about a slight change, about a point. UC Westwood, Lincoln Park, Mosaic, Port St. Lucie High School, Centennial, 99%, Treasure Coast, 99%, which gives us a number we're very proud of, 93% is our projection. It's down about a point, which is a couple of kids. But that still puts us and keeps us in rare air, going on 10 years now as one of a couple of districts in the state of Florida that's maintained a plus 90 graduation rate. It's unheard of. College and career acceleration tells also just a positive story as well. So you see Fort Pierce Central High School at the top row in 23-24, 80% of their graduates successfully pass an ACE, AP, IB, or dual enrollment, or an industry certification exam. Just this past school year, they upped that to 83% for a plus three. Very proud of this number. If you go down the list, Westwood's up a point, Lincoln Park Academy's plus 11, Mosaic, Port St. Lucie High School's up four. At 90% of their kids have a industry certification or a college credit earned, banked, that they take with them for the rest of their lives. Very, very conservative projection. I'm putting a plus one, which puts us at plus, at 77% of our graduates. We're hoping for another point or two. Very proud of both of these numbers, that we maintain the excellence that we had last school year. We will be able to project that this school year. So now, looking forward to 2026, let's take a look at some of our strategies, how we monitor what matters, and how the executive directors, and to Dr. Prince's point, the instructional reviews or performance meetings play into that, and that aligns definitely to goal number one. So superintendent goal number one is sustaining and accelerating improvement in all core areas. And today, I'll focus a little bit more on reading and math, but mention science and social studies. Can't do that without really pointing us back to our mantra, our belief, and the key of this district, and our pledge, that all children are capable of success, no exceptions. And we all believe that. Everything we're going to say today is encapsulated in that belief. Belief is one thing, though. Today, I'll talk about some of the systems and strategies to support that belief, right? So when you look at last year, we're excited, because our fourth grade was a plus seven last school year in reading, and those kids are going to take the science test this year. So not only do we believe, but we've got some data that's going to show, wow, our sixth grade was a plus 11 from the year before. They'll be in seventh grade this year, they're going to take the civics test. On top of that, our seventh grade was a plus 11 from the prior year, and they'll take the eighth grade science test. And then our 10th grade was a plus four, and they'll be taking US history. So not only do we believe, but actually, coincidentally, our data points and the cohorts in grade levels are poised for even better success this school year than last. And of course, as a reminder, let me mention this again, last year, we were a plus 120 in terms of proficiency, when you add all those categories that were tested on, exceeding the state, which was a plus 76. So thinking chronologically, the first thing we want to do is get our kids opportunities and poised for success when the year starts. We want to schedule them well. So I'll just mention and give you some updates on how AMP is doing, middle school algebra and geometry, and then how ACE, AP, and IB are doing in high school. So let's look at the numbers, and let's start with AMP in elementary. Okay, so if we're going to have a great year, we want to schedule our kids very well. And our belief that all kids are capable of success, no exceptions, has to be followed with rigorous curriculum at the appropriate level of what they need to receive. This, if I can orientate you to the slide, shows our growth in the AMP access and opportunity over the last four years, from 2023 to this school year, which I'll be referring to as the 2026 school year. Over that short period of time, we have increased our enrollment by 1,511 students, 1,511, from 453 in grades three through five in AMP, to this year, 1,964. We're very proud of that.
Craig, can you just pause for just a second? I just want to make sure, you know, we talk about AMP all the time, but for our board members, these are students that are basically taking a curriculum that's a year ahead of where they're at with their grade. And Craig, you want to just briefly talk about how those students did?
Absolutely, it's on the next slide.
Perfect. See, it's literally how I just tee you up, Craig.
It's a segue.
Yes, well done.
And I do want to point out that number 21%. So if you think about our overall enrollment in grades three through five, almost one out of four of our students is now on this accelerated track, and we're very proud of that. But to Dr. Prince's point, well, what's the success looking like? So if we break that down further, of our 1,511 students, we break it out by subgroup. And I'll actually point you to this school year. What we're very proud of is that our enrollment in AMP and our access to AMP is equally proportional to our district enrollment. In fact, our largest subgroup enrolled in AMP is our largest subgroup of students enrolled in our school district is our Hispanic students, 657 students. Black, 520, white, 586. And if you look just underneath that big 1-5-1-1, that's our increase in students, that represents a 334 district-wide increase in AMP enrollment over the last four years. Our black subgroup enrollment was up 542%, Hispanics up 457. The other group, which is anyone that's not black, white, Hispanic categorized, is 403, and then our white students, again, 174%, very proud of that. And we're proud to say to every one of our elementary schools that's comprehensive offers now the AMP program. So regardless of your zip code, you're getting access to this rigorous work, and that's a credit to the principals, which I'll touch on a little bit later. So to Dr. Prince's question, okay, we're putting kids in AMP, what's the success, right? Well, last year, Dr. Prince, 95% of our students that were enrolled in AMP scored proficiency on the FAST PM3 exam.
And they take the test of the curriculum that they're learning. So if they're in the fourth grade, they're taking the fifth grade test?
Correct. And if they're in the fifth grade, they take the sixth grade test. So that proficiency is even more impressive when you think the students are taking a math exam that exceeds the grade level that they're enrolled in.
And I just want to say philosophically, you know, our district is a third, a third, a third, you know, a third white, third black, third Hispanic. Now, I want you to take a look over there at 22-23, and the representation in AMP was not necessarily reflective of our population, but if you look at where we are now, it's far more reflective of our population. And that's just a culture of high expectations. And when Dr. Summer talked about, you know, you shouldn't have opportunity based on your zip code, all of our schools offer it, and we're making sure that we have access to students if they show potential, those students are getting an opportunity to have accelerated coursework.
Absolutely. And really, from a district perspective, you think about our success in elementary, if a quarter of our kids are enrolled in advanced math in elementary, that's going to really pay dividends for those kids as they go through middle school and in high school. And it really transforms a district, because now you're really on a track that is built for success and first-generation college, as well as, you know, 21%. Well, if all those kids are passing, that just automatically increases our proficiency. But again, it's about the students, not our success, but it's a win-win. Looking at middle school algebra, which we've traditionally done extremely well with our middle school acceleration, but I'll touch on it, we've actually increased 608 students that are taking algebra or geometry in middle school, which again are high school credit courses, so you see the progression. The darker blue is our geometry enrollment from 206 to 300. The lighter is our algebra enrollment from 1,232 to 1,746. And if we break that down a little bit further by subgroup, we see the similar trends that we're proud to say, that when we schedule students based on their potential, we see a proportional distribution of enrollment that mirrors our district enrollment as well. So we've had a 42% increase in algebra and geometry enrollment over the past four years. That gives us an 87% increase in our black enrollment, 36% in our Hispanic enrollment, 41 other, and then white, 18% increase over a short period of time. As we continue the trend, 95% of our students in middle school pass the geometry exam, and about 80% are scoring at proficiency on algebra. So the success remains, even with the significantly increased enrollment, and that actually, that pass rate is going up as our enrollment is going up.
And Dr. Summer, with regards to the algebra exam, they're passing in middle school, that is a graduation requirement that they're meeting in middle school by passing that exam, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. That is the math requirement to graduate high school. So now, looking at ACE, AP, and IB, which again are college-level courses, we're looking at overall course enrollment from 22-23 to 25-26. And we see that we've added over 7,500 or 7,556 courses of enrollment. So if one student takes four courses, that's a plus four. So this is not by students, by enrollment. We see that we've significantly increased that number from 5,918 courses to 13,474 courses. Well, what does that number give us? That's 128% increase in the last four years in our college-level coursework enrollment. And if you notice the circle, again, the similar trend, when you schedule students based on their potential, and all schools provide rigorous programming, our college-level coursework in high school has a proportional representation of our school district. I'll keep going after I take some questions. Any questions on any of that? And I'll pause throughout.
I do have a question. So I'm looking at, I think it's page number 17, and I see where the, it's a plus 87% for black students. What changed?
So to get into Algebra I in middle school, you know, it benefits you greatly by being proficient in sixth grade or seventh grade. So by increasing the number of kids that are successful in passing their sixth and seventh grade math, we're providing them, we're able to get them access. We're also ensuring that students that are on that bubble, that have a potential to be successful in algebra, are also getting access. That's in middle school. The other part is, honestly, Mrs. Richardson, the AMP really is our benefit also, to where if we provide them with accelerated math in elementary, by the time they're in middle school, they're on that course track, that increases that as well. But you should see significant increases over the next couple of years as AMP has grown, because as the kids matriculate into middle school, that'll occur.
Right, I do see that, I was not looking at elementary, that there is an increase as well in the elementary school. What I'm saying, what changed, we're talking about year 22-23, that's when they were like, I think all of a sudden, between 22-23, 25-26, we have this exponential increase. So what changed between those?
Sure. We do also conduct a process called master schedule audits and reviews, where we work with schools and train our principals on the best methods for scheduling. So a lot of that is also not just success at the middle school level and access at the elementary level, it's scheduling methodology. And I mentioned our dashboards later in the presentation, and I shared a little with you last year, but we're able to drill down to the school site to ensure that every student that has potential is enrolled in the proper course. So it's a combination of good instruction, early access, and excellent scheduling. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am. And also, I will say, I want you to, you know, look at that plus 542% in AMP enrollment, knowing that over the next few years, we should continue to see increased enrollment. So we like to say this is the beginning?
Yeah, I mean, that is the expectation.
For all students.
Yeah, that is the expectation, but you know, what was, is it was a different strategy? We were looking deeper into a certain ethnic group, or you know, something changed?
We keep the focus academics for all kids to make sure they receive rigorous instruction. If that occurs at every school site, all this will take care of itself.
To your point, Mrs. Richardson, I think one of the most important things that we've really done systematically over the last two years is the master schedule audits and making sure, you know, that, you know, we have a singular vision of expectation, that if a student has the potential and they get certain scores, they are going to be offered accelerated opportunities, and we're going to make sure that those pathways are open for students. And if they're not being scheduled, then the next question is, why are they not being scheduled? Okay? And if we don't have a reasonable answer, we are going to, we're going to make sure those things are happening in our schools.
Well, I guess, I mean, that is a good answer, but it goes back to all children are capable of success.
Yes, ma'am.
Bingo.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's what, what changed? You know, it's, I guess, an epiphany, all children are capable of success, we're going to work on, you know, I'm just, something changed in the mindset.
And that's a great point, because I do think that the mindset, the mindsets are... And, and that's a great point, because I do think that the mindset, the mindsets are changing because some of the things that we're doing, we're demonstrating that, that those kids are demonstrating they can be and they are successful when given the opportunities. So that it's a, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy that, look, these things have worked. So it's almost like a steamroll effect, that these strategies work, we're successful, everybody wants to be successful. And we're building on that success through our AMP, because that's directly feeding into Algebra and Geometry in the middle school. And we're just seeing these numbers grow and grow and grow. But it's also a tribute to the instruction in our classrooms. And, and I, I do believe that the level of instruction has never been better. And I'd also like to give a shout out to teaching and learning, because that's directly correlated with the professional development, the detailed work that we do, making sure that the standards are being taught, and that the teachers are embracing that through the materials that are being provided. So I think it's, it's a lot of different things. But the, to, to your point, that, that efficacy or that belief in kids, I think, is, is, is really growing amongst the adults in our schools, that all kids can be successful and will be successful.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All comments at this time? It's been covered?
Yes, ma'am. So then transitioning to now, you know, we've, we've given students opportunities, we're set for success. How do we monitor what matters? And I'll speak to our instructional reviews, also known as performance meetings, and a little bit on our executive directors. And if you remember, last year, I highlighted Power BI, which is a fantastic business intelligence and data visualization tool. It's incredible. And, you know, we really have our, you know, got to give a shout out to Jim Dunn, Vanessa Bell, Terrence O'Leary, and the IT team for working with us on the academic side to make sure we're able to get this into principals, assistant principals, deans, and coaches' hands to save them time, so they can do the real work of making sure instruction improves. But it also enables us to really keep a close eye, making sure all students are getting a world-class education, and transform that data into something that we can act on. And I showed you this last year, but we have a dashboard for essentially every category of what we monitor, which I won't bore you with today, I think I did that last year, but, you know, academic data, discipline, grading, scheduling. So when we talk about, where did I get the data from to show you today? From our scheduling, which is in the bottom right, okay? So just touching on that. But it has to be a system of ongoing data monitoring. And we send out weekly emails. I send out an email every week that follows a cadence and a scope and sequence of what is important to ma, to monitor and when. A lot of thought goes into, what do we want people's eyes on? When principals meet every week with their executive director and a virtual teams meet, what's the important points that they need to look at and discuss to make, make sure students are successful? And what's shared via that? And then finally, when we report out on a regular basis to the superintendent, to the cabinet, what are those data points? Has to be ongoing. But I want to kind of focus on one item, which is our school performance meetings. You see Mrs. Broom using our Power BI dashboard to, during her, her, her school performance meeting. So what is a performance meeting? First of all, we want to know, they're conducted in the fall and in the winter at all St. Lucy Public Schools. They follow the PM one and the PM two respectively. So the fall meeting follows PM one, which is actually ongoing now, and the winters follow the PM two. And it's really a collaborative effort that Dr. Prince mentioned, that includes school and district staff. And they follow a specific protocol that we've designed. So they're implemented with consistency. And most importantly, they're not events. It's a process that we meet with schools, we work collaboratively, and we really are strategic with what the, what's the follow-up going to be, so that it focuses on student outcomes. So as an example, we create a slide deck template, so that each school fills out, and this is a picture of last year's Dan McCarty. Shout out to Dan McCarty for moving that school to a B. It's a reflective process that each school uses the same slide deck with some slight modifications, because every school is slightly different. But they get a template that they use to complete and reflect. And the beauty of it is, if you look at it, we're able to leverage our Power BI to ensure that they're able to access data for their enrollment, for tracking student progress if they're, if they have some concerns in science and social studies, and specifically if they want to key in on their language learners in science and social studies. We provide them data points to make sure they know how to pull average daily attendance, so they can see, how's my school culture going? If they want to track their academic data, like I say, right now, we're looking at PM one for their students with disabilities, okay? It's a process that we file that enables schools to reflect on their data at that current time. And then we walk classrooms. And this is key, because there's nothing more important than a school board, a superintendent that sets a vision and creates guardrails for how we're supposed to operate. But we have to make sure when we, when we do these meetings, that we're walking classrooms and seeing the rubber hit the road. And most importantly, regardless of how fantastic the school is, we give feedback for all schools. And again, it's collaborative and supportive, but it's focused. And each school is different. The bulk of the meetings are actually in the classrooms. And the schools and the district staff conduct those walks, and we jointly develop our feedback together. I can't stress that more. And just here's some pictures of what our walks look like. There are actually walks going on now. So Mrs. Willard, that's not in real time, but she's at a performance meeting as we speak, she's not here today. That's her at FK Suite. This is Mrs. Willard presenting out the findings from our performance meetings. Here is our OTL staff, Mrs. Rodriguez and Mrs. Belitho, at, this was last year at Fairlon, working with Principal Rick Zecker. Here's Mrs. Broom as she's walking classrooms, monitoring small group instruction at FK Suite. And then, of course, this is us at Fairlon just discussing, actually, I'm sorry, that's FK Suite. That's us discussing, what is it in terms of our next steps? Because once we walk classrooms and look at our data that we specifically and strategically outline for the schools to analyze, the key is what are going to be our deliverables and next steps? And then when are we coming back to monitor after that performance meeting that those next steps are in place? What supports are needed? What district-level access do, do we need to provide? What kind of tiered support does that school need? All those questions are really driven by our performance meetings that are done twice here at each school. Dr. Prince?
Yeah, I just wanted to also share with the board, this is also a way for us to see in the classrooms, when we have teaching and learning, and we've got Denise Rodriguez or Heather Belitho or Liz Pruitt, you know, we're also looking to see how our materials are being utilized. Are they being utilized? Are the instructional materials that we're providing sufficient? Are the teaching, are the teachers teaching to the standard? Do they know how to use the materials? There's a lot of observational things that occur in the performance meetings that includes a lot of our different departments. But as we go in and then debrief with Dr. Summer and Denise Rodriguez, it, it's all about how can we make the learning environment better? What suggestions can we make? Do we have to make some changes from a, a training standpoint, that we're not effectively training the teachers on how to use certain things? So there's a lot of things that allows us to really not only self-reflect, but also provide some, some really important feedback to the principals and the support staffs at the school centers to, to maximize our opportunities for instruction. And I think this really took shape with a lot of the processes that we put into place second semester last year, where I think we hit our stride, and we had the most successful year we've ever had. I feel so much more confident where we are right now, being able to start at the beginning of the year with processes, I think, and, and tools that we created, that I think make a huge difference in the performance of our students in our classrooms.
And, and to your point, Doc, this really is reciprocal in nature. It's not just summative of people coming to your school and telling you how good you did. The reciprocal nature is when the district staff attends and walks actual classrooms, then we're, you know, that we're able to see is what we're looking to implement actually working. And if not, what other supports are needed? And most importantly, what trends are being seen district-wide, so that professional learning can be guided? And our, to Doc's point, our Department of Teaching, Learning, and Leading does an amazing job leveraging the monthly trainings for the assistant principals, the principals, the deans, the, the reading coaches, to match the trends. And it has to be fluid, based on need. Then, of course, from an account, an accountability, accountability standpoint, as a school, when I develop a detailed action plan, I now have a continual improvement process to follow throughout the year. And it's in writing so that everyone in the school site knows and understands what instructional shifts need to occur, and need to occur fast. Because I keep telling all the principals and APs, hey, listen, we're, we're in week seven of the school year, believe it or not. We're about to start our countdown to mid-year. So time is of the essence. Yeah, sorry, I heard some moans in the back. I didn't even put the number of minutes yet, but next meeting, next principal meeting, I will. But sense of urgency is, is important. And truly, it is a balance of pressure and support to ensure that we achieve our goals. The support has to be there. And we have to grow our principals. And I've shared this with you before, and it aligns to the principal supervisor model. And Dr. Prince has said, teachers move students, and there's nothing more important in our district than great teachers and support staff, from the bus drivers on down to the paraprofessionals and all the other groups. I'm leaving out anyone that works with schools, but I'll highlight principals right now, because the Wallace Foundation did a study that lasted a number of decades, that showed when you put in a highly effective principal at an elementary school that's in the top quarter of performance, you're going to add on three months of learning. Three months of learning additional for those students in that entire school, in both reading and math. So our model lends itself to make sure that our principal's capacity is at the, at the absolute highest level. If it's not, as in like the John Maxwell leadership led, the school can never achieve its maximum performance. You don't see the double-digit gains that you're seeing, you don't see the A-grade you're seeing without highly effective principals. Now, the good news is, we have the best principals in the state, and they're pictured here. And by the way, October is National Principals Month. Thank you, Lydia, for sharing that with me. I hope I didn't ruin the surprise of what you're going to share out. So that is our updated pick. And I say that, I say that coming in from Palm Beach. It's just, for me, it's just, I'm in heaven working with this fantastic group you see on the screen. And of course, everyone that supports them. You can't have great principals without fantastic and incredible executive directors, Mrs. Mona Ray Miller Buchanan. You can stand, if you don't mind, we can give you a round of applause, because I don't know how often you get it. You deserve that, because, you know, you get the seven o'clock phone calls when there's a problem. The applause doesn't always occur. Mrs. Willard, who I mentioned at a school site, so kudos to her. She's actually. Hi, Mrs. Willard, I know you're going to watch this later. But she's actually conducting a performance meeting as we speak, along with our OTL staff, Darryl Canamas. And the newest addition to the team are executive director overseeing school renewal, Mrs. Diane Lineback. So you have this in a handout, I won't read it to you, but just for your own edification, you'll have a picture of each executive director and the schools that they supervise, which is a pretty sweet spot of the number of schools, as per the Wallace Foundation research, that the executive director is not just the supervisor, they are, you know, sometimes the therapist, is my joke. To, I'm a, I'm a recovering principal, so I can say that. But, you know, the, the team leader, the professional developer, the coach, the supporter, the evaluator, the, the partner, when it comes to thought partnership. Those are Latricia, Mrs. Willard's schools. Those are Mr. Canamas's schools. And again, you can refer to your handout, should you ever have a question. We are strategic with the executive director skill set, as well as the schools that they supervise, as well as the principal's skill set. We do tweak them each year a little bit, you know, to maximize success as we tier our schools for support. Some schools receive more intensive support than others. In fact, our school renewal sites, as you'll see, the list is a little shorter, that, that's, those are our schools that are in the, the most need of intensive support. And we have fantastic principals there that really are just pulling off incredible results, so that we don't have any D R F schools, which is great. So kudos to them and Mrs. Lineback, who has that experience from the state of Florida, working with the DOE. I'll pause there for just a second. I talked about the performance meeting, as well as the executive directors who facilitate those. Any questions?
Board members, any questions? On what's been said so far? I, I just want to.
Bayshore, Bayshore's meeting right now.
I just wanted to say that in regards to Ms. Richardson's question, so much has gone into this to make the tremendous difference.
Yes.
And, and focusing on every child, right? And this is what you talked about. And also, we need a little pressure, high expectations from everyone, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That's gone into that. It may not have been in place strongly years ago, but now it's there. And it's showing through the data that is making a difference, also the support.
Yes.
You know, I don't know how many times I've heard a teacher in the past say, a new teacher, you know, there's nobody to help me, or I don't have the proper support. But now we're focusing on every teacher, on every student, on every principal, you know? And our, everybody plays a tremendous part. I'm so glad we have such a strong executive director of schools, a group that's, because they're, they're part of it. If their part is not there, then everybody under them. And also, as well as our support staff here on the district level, and our superintendent to give you definitely your kudos, because I tell you all the time, that based on who you are is what's going to trickle down. So it's always having the leaders, the right leaders in the right place. And, and we honor and respect all of you for what you do every day in that area. Been here now going on sixteen years, I have seen the difference.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Board members, any other? Mrs. Richardson?
Thank you. So they, they, to what you were saying, Dr. Summers and Dr. Mills, support. I think that is so important, and I'm so happy that, that that is in place. Not that it wasn't in place, but it's kind of like being enforced, the support needed, because that's what I hear from teachers, you know, that. And not just support, Dr. Mills, but the tools. Sometimes the tools. Each school, we talk about individuality or individuals, and each school is an individual depending on the demographic. So each school is not a one-size-fits-all. We need the different tools to support the, the teaching and learning. So I'm happy that it is reciprocal, that you are listening to what the teachers, the principals, whoever is asking for the tools that they need in order to be successful, that we're actually listening. You know, we're like, to your point, where you said that we're not going in and telling them, this is what you need. You know, we are having this conversation, you're listening, you're providing the tools. And it, it, you know, obviously, it is, it is something that's not just in words, but in action, because we are seeing the success. So I'm very happy to hear that, because that was on my list of things to talk, you know, the tools, making sure that they have the tools in order to, to succeed. I like the, the idea of the, you said fluid, being very fluid. You know, things change, people change, you know, we, you know, we grow whatever, you know? So we have to be fluid and flexible. So I do like those words, and as long as they are being implemented, which, you know, it seems like it's been implemented, because at the end of the day, we have the success, that's, that, that's, that's good. And pressure and support, you know, gold or diamonds, they, 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 we get them because of pressure. You know, there is a substantial amount of pressure, not too much.
Yes.
You know, but it, there has to be some pressure. And so I'm liking all of those, as long as it's with, with care and concern and empathy and whatever, as long as all of those go, because it's a lot of stuff that goes in that pressure, you know, that, so that we'll continue this success. But what you were saying just now, you know, I really, I like those words. I, I, I do.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And I would say trust is another, and collaboration. Didn't mention it, but I think the other part I want to give credit to the executive directors for is they each host a weekly meet. That's a teams meet. Yeah, we were thinking along the same lines, because the, it builds trust, but it also builds collaboration, because that executive director is a team leader of their group of principals. And a lot of thought and effort goes into actionable, on-the-spot professional learning for that week. But most importantly, if you're doing something extremely well, I'm going to really push on you to say, hey, I need this shared with the group. And we can't really know who's doing well unless we actually go see it and then back it up with data. So that collaboration, I feel like, is what allows us and that, to build that trust, so we can have the right balance of pressure and support to get the results we're seeing.
And I was going to mention, Dr. Summer implemented the, the role alikes. When did we start that last year?
A couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. Twenty-three, twenty-four.
So every Monday, every executive director with their portfolio, they meet with their, with their principals, and they talk about best practices. And I, I will say that, you know, we take our unit assessments every few weeks, and it's really created a lot of collaboration amongst the principals, because if they see someone doing very, very well on things, they want to know how they're doing it. So we've really been able to bring some barriers down, and, and I, kudos to the executive directors, because they facilitate those meetings. Principals share best practices of what they're doing and how they're doing it. And I think, you know, even, you know, schools like Park And I think, you know, even, you know, schools like Parkway that have really blown it out of the water, you know, what is, what was LaTanya doing over there? You know, with regards to, especially with math. Those things are being shared from school to school. And those processes, other principals are picking up on. And I think that collaborative nature has really been very instrumental to our success.
It sure does, it sure does. And that's going back to remember, everyone gets feedback. Sometimes the feedback is, "That was so amazing, I need that shared with the rest of your teammates." Everyone can grow, so.
And I also really like what you're doing with putting the right people in the right place, whether it be a teacher or be a principal or whoever. They have, they're set up for success, not failure. Because you can have someone that is very good with a certain environment or students or whatever, and then flunk out with another group. So putting the right people in the right place is really important. And I know that's what we're doing now.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, board members, any more comments or questions? All right.
Yes, ma'am. So, okay, snapshot, this is PM one, or progress monitoring one. And I'll talk about reading and math. And we'll do a year-to-year comparison. Again, this aligns to superintendent, superintendent goal number one, which is sustaining and accelerating improvement in all core areas. So the progress monitoring one and the progress monitoring two, it's important for us to all know and understand that it's to provide a baseline. PM one is a baseline. PM two is a mid-year. But the assessment, which the window is just about closing, and we have about all of our data in, it's assessing students at the entire year of standards. It's not a pre-test. It is essentially a post-test taken in the beginning of the year. As if I received instruction in fourth grade for the whole year, I'm taking that to get my baseline. So students may not be a proficiency, and that's fine. They're going to make growth throughout the year, especially in math. But the goal is this, for informational purposes only, not to be summative. It lets us identify areas for support. And really, when we talk about grade level, just a level set remind us, on grade level or proficient, and there's a couple of ways to define it, but for today, it's levels three through five. Students are, when they take a PM one, a PM two, and the end of the year, they get put into a level. One and two is not proficient. Three through five, we consider for today, proficient, okay? Although we really want students at level four to call them proficient. We'll consider three through five proficient for today in terms of the achievement levels. Looking at this school year, these are our actual results for the baseline. And again, it's the full year assessment given in the beginning of the year. And I broke it down for you by grade level and then compared it to the state of Florida. You see all green, which is good, right? So on the top left, you see our grade level three. And last year, you see the 20%. That was our proficient at the baseline, the beginning of the year. This year, we're at 21%, which gives us a plus one, or a point higher. Again, starting the year, it's just a baseline. And the state's a plus two. And again, these sometimes get rounded. But if you look at each grade level and go on down, you see the blue checkboxes, which means that our improvement on the baseline exceeds that of the state. And what we're actually really happy of, if you look at sixth grade, you see this year, in the third row, third column, we're at 44%. We're starting the year in the forties, which is a good place to be, okay? But again, this is just a baseline and we are nowhere near done. Last year, we went from 33% to 53%. So huge gains are made throughout the year. So just keep that in mind. The state's up a couple of points each. As well, here's just a screenshot of when we make comparisons by grade level to schools that have a 10% or greater increase. Alapata Creative Flats, excuse me, Creative Arts, Alapata Flats and Creative Arts have a lot of grade levels that are really up this year at the baseline. So does Oakhamic, Mosaic, Morningside. And you can see the list. I'll move to math. Math, this is a tricky one, I'm going to be honest with you because you'll see these numbers, third grade. Last year, we started the year at 6%. But it kind of makes sense, it's intuitive, because who's going to know third grade math before they get into third grade? Not a lot of kids. In fact, in St. Lucy, only 6%. In the state of Florida, it was only 8%. However, we tie or match the state. This is almost identical to where we were last year in terms of our proficiency. We climbed from 11% last year to 56%. So huge growth is made in math. And the baseline is not that correlative to the end of the year. Those are our schools that started the year with a, with a, with a top baseline. But let's, let's kind of put it together in a scorecard like we always do, year to year. And we're happy, we'll take this good news, is that if you cumulative add in our year-to-year. So like the plus one means we're 1% higher than last year. We're a plus 33. We're starting the year at plus 33 on the baseline. Now, that's a good thing that we were an A school last year. And the bar's a little bit higher, but we'll take that plus 33, which starts us even a little bit higher. So we gained a little bit over the summer as the state was a plus 29. Okay, so when PM two occurs in December and in January, we'll report out as to how much growth have we made throughout the year. But this is where we're starting. We've already closed that gap by 4%. If you look at it visually, probably the most relevant slide, part of this slide is in the bottom right. We're a plus three overall. So we're starting the school year with 3% greater proficiency at the baseline than last school year. And in math, we're a plus one compared to last year. So we're slightly higher. But again, huge growth has to occur throughout the year, which that's our plan. Any questions on that data? I know I covered a lot. Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? Okay, I do have a comment with this because we know our kids just hit the PM one, right?
And that's what we're looking at, the baseline.
Right, that's what we're looking at. And my, my grandson was really concerned. He's in all accelerated classes. But he was really concerned, he's a fifth grader now,
Yeah.
about his scores. Because he's used to getting like, you know, fives at the end of the year type thing, form fives. And he got a three. And he was like, you know, it's, it's important that we make sure our children understand on the local level, in the classroom, what you're telling us now.
Yep.
Because, and he probably heard that, but he still was concerned, you know? Just being a kid and being a kid that really is achieving. So, but they do need to make sure that the teachers, make sure they understand that this is just to see where they are.
Correct.
And it's not a test. It is more of an evaluation, or a post-test if anything, to see where they are and how much growth they have throughout the year. But yeah, I just had that discussion last week with my grandson. So we want to make sure that's clear.
I had the same conversation with my daughter. She's now a fifth grade teacher. And she said, "Dad, all my kids are at level three." I said, "Congratulations." She said, "No, they were fours and fives." I said, "No, that's a good thing." So it does create some anxiety, which is why we underline this point. And it's in your handout, but as we have any anxiety in the community, we remind them of the bottom, informational purposes only. And it's to identify areas for additional instruction and support.
Appreciate this. I think this is the first time I've ever listened to a PM one analyzation. As a coach, I'd say, "Who cares?" I know it's important as educators because you want to build on top of that. But just for the listening audience, this isn't just the only time that we do analytical tests to help monitor where we are. We consistently do it throughout the year.
Yes.
So I just don't want people thinking, "Oh, we only test three times a year and this is all we do." And we don't teach the tests, we teach the standards. And we're backing the standards up through what we do. And this is just a celebration of what the kids know. Obviously, this is the first test where students come in and just take it. And it's a benchmark, just like you said. So, you know, I really don't put much credence into it. It just helps our teachers know where their students are at and the teachers how to teach. So when people at home watch this, this, don't go, "Oh, my goodness." No, no, this is good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And very well stated.
I just have a question, piggybacking on that comment. Because this is a baseline test. So how many more tests are we given between PM one and PM two? I mean, are we just testing?
No, it's, it's, you know, it's a combination. But between PM one and PM two, we have our district-created unit assessments. And it depends on what grade level you're in and what subject we're talking to. But there's a couple.
No, I'm talking about math. I was just talking about math.
Yeah, so, and similar answer in math. As we go through units of instruction, the students get some, some, some assessments that are able to give the teacher some formalized feedback. But truly, great teachers monitor student learning every day. And like, one example could be an exit ticket. So, you know, before we leave for the day class, I want you to complete this, this activity and then turn it in to me and have a great day, love you. But as, I'm the teacher now, and I'm going to use that exit ticket to see, did my kids get it? So it's not high stakes. But we're, you know, we're essentially assessing on a daily, but not like people think. We're just monitoring growth. The unit assessments are every few weeks, if that's maybe what you're looking for.
And unit assessments is, you know, obviously, is needed and essential. But when, when I think of a test, I think of a test that matters, that, you know, that's going to go against their, the, the, the school grade or whatever grade. So those are the tests that I'm talking about.
Sure.
Obviously, you know, we have to have these little, you know...
Yeah, so the high stakes or the, or the state-based is PM one in the beginning of the year, August and September. And then PM two is between December and January.
Yes, I, I, I understa-, but you know, when I talk to parents sometimes, it's like, you know, every time I turn around, they are being tested. And that kind of sets them off. It's like, when do they learn? They are just being tested, tested, tested. So I guess the answer is that this is not a, a, a state mandated test. This is just something we are giving, just to see where they're at today, you know?
So the PM is designed by the state of Florida and mandated. So, and that's just the three times a year, the baseline, the mid-year, and then the summative at the end of the year. Those are the state required that we provide. The others are either county or teacher-based. But we watch it really closely because, because we understand, we don't expose our students to overtesting. And there are actually our minute requirements of the amount of testing that we're allowed to do as per, per the state of Florida that we monitor as well. We feel we're in a really good sweet spot as we see our kids are really growing here. And our, kind of, we have a pretty good system for assessment that I have to give a shout out to our assessment department, as well as our curriculum department for putting that together. And all that is considered, so, you know, we don't, we don't want to hear too much of that. And when we go on performance meetings, if teach, and we look at our scope and our sequence for curriculum, we'll get the feedback from the principals quick. Because again, they're student advocates, and if they feel like we're overtesting, they'll tell us. So it is something we, we watch closely, to your point. It's a good, it's a good question, though.
Thank you.
Being the guy that's been around here the longest, we've been through numerous math curriculums. And we've seen, you know, learning the learner communicator math. And I think, and then we've seen, when we went to FCAT testing, we were testing like every week. Literally, literally testing every week. And I, I think this has been probably one of the, sort of like you said, it's one of the sweetest parts right now with the assessment group that we have, being fair and understanding unit tests by the grade. They don't say each teacher needs to have so many tests, this and this for grades. They allow the, the, the school and the teacher to, the grade groups to, to monitor it on their own. And this is why these data means that they have are so directional in, in, in instruction because you do need to have assessment. You can't have students go three weeks without learning their multiplication facts, without testing and assessing it. Yes, you can have an exit assessment, but you have to put it all together just so that they're not learning threes for one day and fours. It's the same thing in algebra. You can't, you have to learn grouping, but you have to do it and then assess it just to make sure they got the totality of what's taking place in that instructional class period. So we're, I think with assessment and instructional things, we are doing really well. And I appreciate everyone involved that do do that. We hear it from students, you know, because you start hearing students complaining sometimes and you're like, "Oh, I'm getting tested for this, this, this." Well, you know, it's basically in high school towards the end of the year, like, I don't want to say civics or something like that, but yeah. We need to get our grades in, so we need to start testing. But, but most courses, you don't hear it on. So, so there hasn't been much complaints. And I think when, when you talk to older people, they're used to hearing, when my students were in school, my kids were in school and they were tested a lot. It's changed. So that mentality has changed and people are now saying different things too. So it's totally different.
Madam Chair? I, I'd like to say I had that same question about how much they were being tested because those concerns have been brought to my attention before. And Mr. Ocampo put together a wonderful spreadsheet of the tests, which were mandatory by the state, you know? And I really looked that over. I thought it was very cumulative and it made sense to me. So I get that we're asking those questions because I feel like we, those concerns are raised to us. But once I got the data in a spreadsheet form of all the tests that were given throughout the year, I was very comfortable with it.
I believe the latest is posted on our website. But it also speaks to the collaboration through our cabinet meetings and our collaborative planning to where our assessment department is really in good communication with our curriculum department so that instruction and assessment align to fulfill the requirements. So yeah, I, I, if I was, I'm a little biased, but as an outsider, if I came in, I'd say, "Wow, that's a really good system you guys have."
I remember what it was. It was benchmarks. We were doing three to four benchmarks in four different subjects. And that was a killer.
Yeah. They are, they're all great points and it's something we watch closely. Yep.
And yet, it's so important to have the, the evaluation of every child. And parents need to know that, that we need to know where your child is
Yes.
at any given time so that we can help your child learn the material and not just get passed by. But they, we know, okay, this child needs more help. That's focusing.
Yes.
And that's, that has really helped our children learn more within our education, our educational program and why we have achieved to the A status. Every single child is being focused on and we know where they're at at any given time so we can get the help that they need. So we have to evaluate.
Yep, and we understand it's a delicate balance.
Okay.
Continue, yes, ma'am. So, I think my attendance slide got cut off, but I'll, so I'll just give you a quick date from memory. We're sitting slightly higher than last year. So kudos, although it's not our, in our superintendent goals. It is something we monitor on a daily basis. We're proud to report we're above 93%. We're about 93.2%. So the last couple of years, as I like to say, when you visualize what's 2% to 3% a day of additional attendance is essentially an entire school. It's about 1,000 students in a 50,000-student school district. So can't give enough kudos to the schools, as well as our district departments and our social workers that support that. So we're at about 93%. And it might be in your hand, it might be in your handout. If not, I can always follow up. Dr. Prince, sir, that's Madam Chair, that's all I've got for today.
All right, thank you, Dr. Summer. That was a, I really appreciate Dr. Summer, great presentation. Now we're going to pivot to mental health and introduce our executive director of Student Services, Heather Rowland.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Madam Chair, Dr. Mills, Vice Chair, Mr. Ingersoll, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. We are grateful to stand before you today to talk about mental health. And I know that as a school board, your commitment to mental health continues. Thank you for granting this opportunity to us. And I'd like to be, begin by just expressing our gratitude for your ongoing dedication to supporting the mental health and well-being of our students and our staff. As St. Lucy Public Schools, we continue to prioritize academics and student success. We understand that equally, it is essential to address the mental health and well-being of our students and staff members. And this commitment is clearly reflected in Dr. Prince's goals as a superintendent to go for, to enhance the mental health supports for students and staff and expanding professional learning and training opportunities for employees. But before we begin our presentation, I'd just like to have the opportunity to introduce members of our team. Many of you, I'm sure, know them, but just I want to bring attention to them because they will be presenting this morning. Dr. Michelle Gillard is our Coordinator of Mental Health and Psychological Services. She is also a licensed school psychologist. Doc, Ms. Esther Rivera is our Director of Student Services. She's been with us for four years, coming to us from Palm Beach County. And of course, the one and only Dr. Wild, who will be speaking to us today about employee supports and professional learning. In addition, you may also notice the employees in the audience that are sporting green today. This is our mental health team on both sides of us. If you want to just stand up and be recognized, our team is comprised of our school psychologists, school counselors... If you wanna just stand up and be recognized, our team is comprised of our school psychologists, school counselors, school social workers, behavior specialists, life parent educators, behavior specialists, and culture and learning environment specialists. So, thank you so much for being here, along with our school psychologists, of course. So, today's presentation will provide us an overview of mental health supports within our schools. Detail the services and supports available for our students and employees, as well as outlining additional training opportunities that we're providing for employees. In addition to that, we're going to hear from parents. We're also going to hear from students and from teachers about the impact that mental health supports and services have made in their lives. Without any further ado, I would like to introduce again, Ms. Esther Rivera, as she continues our presentation this morning. Ms. Esther Rivera, our Director of Student Services.
Good morning, my name is Esther Rivera, I'm the Director of Student Services, and I'm extremely proud of the work we are presenting to you guys today. Just making mention of Goal Four of Dr. Prince's Superintendent Strategic Goals, which includes enhancing mental health supports for students and staff by expanding professional learning and training opportunities for all employees. This picture sums up our work. All children are capable of success, no exceptions. Open dialogue about mental health is essential to reducing stigma, fostering early interventions, and ensuring we are promoting a culture of empathy and understanding. In this slide, you will see some rather alarming numbers. Twenty percent of our youth have been, have discussed and shared that they have a mental health condition. Of those, about fifteen percent receive treatment in any given year, but the majority, seventy to eighty percent, receive services in school. Hence, why mental health support services in schools is essential for the success of a student. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for youth, and youth are six times more likely to complete evidence-based training, treatment when offered in schools. So, by encouraging these conversations, we are creating environments where individuals feel supported and empowered to seek help when needed. Rather than just hear from us, it is important to hear from some of our students, St. Lucy Public Schools, also a teacher and a parent. And the question that you're hearing them answer will be, what did you like about getting counseling in schools? And then for teachers and caregivers, what were some changes or some positive noticing's that you had when your student received mental health counseling?
About getting counseling in school, that I have someone to talk to, and they'll actually listen to me, and they will, they'll stand steady for me.
I liked how we all got to come together and discuss and write down what is that could help us when we're stressed.
Changes that I've noticed in my students that receive mental health counseling is a decrease in anxiety. They are more amped to participate in whole group and small group instruction.
The positive changes that I have noticed in my child since she started school-based counseling is that she's a lot more independent. She has more of a growth mindset. She is able to do things on her own and figure out social situations and how to handle them.
As educators, it's important for us to understand that mental health challenges can emerge at any stage of a student's development, from early childhood all the way through adulthood. And again, emotional psychological struggles are not limited to older students. Even young children may experience anxiety, depression, trauma, or behavior challenges. And often, before they even have a language, to be able to adequately express their feelings. So, this slide right here provides you just a little bit of a visual of why it is extremely important for us to recognize mental health concerns, and that they could arise at any age. And we are now in a better position, due to all the training and professional learning that our school district has provided our educators to better be positioned to observe any warning signs, respond with empathy, and connect students with appropriate student support services. I would like to highlight our team, and I know that our Executive Director, Heather Rowland, just highlighted, but I also wanna say thank you to the board, because of the referendum that you guys helped approve. We were able to add to our team to provide these services for our students and staff. So, here we have a representation of some of our staff. We have a hundred and six school counselors that are certified and provide academic guidance and mental health support across all grade levels. So, if you are a counselor, may you please stand up, school counselors? They are the first line of support for students and staff at school sites, and I truly am extremely proud of the work that they do. We have twenty school social workers across our campuses, and they address barriers to learning by connecting students and families with resources, as well as a parent engagement educator and culture and learning environment specialist. If you fall under this category, may you please stand up so you'll be recognized, social workers? We have eleven school-based mental health counselors, who main role is to deliver therapeutic services directly in school, supporting students with more intensive mental health needs. If you are a mental health counselor, may you please stand up? And we have seventeen school psychologists conducting assessments, supporting special education, supporting exceptional student education services, and promoting positive behavior and mental wellness. So, if you are a school psychologist, may you please stand up? So, together, this team works collaboratively to ensure that every student has access to support they need to thrive. And again, extremely thank you, thankful for the referendum for passing to be able to provide these services for our students. With that being said, I would like to introduce Dr. Michelle Gillard, who has been truly an expert in this field. This is her passion and, for life's work, correct? And an amazing colleague of mine, Dr. Gillard.
Thank you. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about, kind of, the nuts and bolts of mental health. And starting with what we mean by risk factors. So, mental health is really complex, a lot goes into it. It includes both the positive attributes, so those things that make us more able to kinda deal with whatever life throws at us, as well as the struggles or challenges that we face every day. So, one way to think about this is in terms of risk factors and protective factors. Risk factors are those things that make it more likely that someone will face a mental health challenge later on down the road. And it's not a one-to-one correspondence, so, in other words, it's not like if you have one risk factor, you're definitely gonna go on to face a mental health challenge. But rather, kind of, we think about it really like a scale. So, with risk factors being those, those challenges, and protective factors being the thing that makes it more likely that you'll develop positive mental health, what we are looking for is, does the, do the, do the positive outweigh the negative? So, do the protective factors outweigh those risk factors? That's what we're really trying to set kids up with. All of our schools are utilizing this, a multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS structure, when implementing all kinds of interventions. So, academic interventions, behavioral interventions, mental health interventions as well. We're gonna get more specifically into each one of these levels, but generally speaking, Tier One are those universal supports, so that's for everyone. Tier Two are for smaller groups of students, and then Tier Three are those more intensive supports. And oftentimes, those are one-on-one or individual interventions. So, just like with our academic interventions, it's really important to make sure that what we're doing in the area of mental health is utilizing evidence-based strategies or, or programs when we're working with our youth. And it, it runs the gamut. So, we start with increasing mental health literacy, or helping our young people understand what mental health means and what it is. And that goes all the way to those more individual interventions, so like, the, the therapeutic or the counseling interventions, and then everything in between. But we cannot forget the, the importance of supporting our staff, mental health, and staff well-being. We make very significant differences in the lives of kids by simply making sure that the adults have what they need to be successful. Because when they have what they need, they are able to better help and, and, and better address the needs of our young people. So, when we look at that MTSS structure, the multi-tiered systems of supports for mental health, we're starting with Tier One. And Tier One is that universal level, or that's for everyone. And so, we're talking about things like youth mental health first aid, the instruction for adults. We're also including things like PBIS, or our Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, and Kids at Hope. Those are our Tier One or universal supports. And then, as we move up in the tiers, it becomes more intensive, focused, and specific in terms of what we're doing and how we're intervening with our kids, our students. So, when we get to that Tier Three or that intensive level of support, we're talking about individual interventions, individual counseling, substance abuse, suicide risk assessments, those types of things. So, we're gonna get back to hearing from our, our stakeholders. And for this question, they were asked what strategies or tools they learned in counseling, or that their child or student learned in counseling.
Good coping school skills or tools I, that helped me cope was squishies, talking to a friend, or laying down and somewhere, or like, talking to a teacher.
Some good skills and tools we learned were to take a couple of deep breaths, draw a picture, listen to some calming music, and then try to get back at it again.
Seeing counseling service, I noticed that my students are more confident, they can interact with their peers more positively, and they're able to use the coping strategies that they've learned in the services.
My child's participation in class after receiving counseling is that she is a lot happier. She is able to handle situations on her own, be more independent, and have a growth mindset to help her in all social situations that she is in.
So, before we start talking more specifically about the services that we provide at each of, each of those levels, do you have any questions or, or comments about this part so far?
I just have a question, what is the catalyst for progression through the tiers?
That's a really good question. I think that the best way to sum it up is that someone's noticing that there's a concern, truly. We have to, sometimes, our young people will come to us and say, you know, hey, I, I need help, or, or this is what's bothering me. But more often than not, it's because someone has noticed a change in, in whatever's going on with that child. And that's really all it takes, is someone saying, hey, whether it's the child, or a parent, or a teacher, just someone speaking up and saying, hey, this is a concern for me, what, you know, can we do something about that?
And what is the parent's role in the progression?
In terms of accessing the services, or what types of services, do you mean?
Being involved and knowing what services are provided.
So, truly, they're a partner. And we welcome and want that collaboration with parents or guardians, because frankly, they see that child more often than we do, right? So, we, we have them during the school day, but they have them all weekend and during the summer, and they're going to notice changes in a way that we may not see, for a variety of reasons. And so, first and foremost, in any, and we'll, we'll talk more about the specific services, but anytime we're providing counseling services with, with a student, whether it's a group counseling or individual counseling, we have to have parent consent. So, we're never going to move forward with that level of service without consent from the parent or guardian, which makes them pretty important in terms of having, having those, those services progress, like you said. Does that help?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on the fact that the parent involvement was there, and they.
Oh, absolutely.
Had permission to be engaged and involved.
Yes.
At every level of service.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And we, we keep them involved and informed, and our service providers are updating parents and guardians about what's going on and things like that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
So, if the, if the parent is concerned, just to clarify it for our community. They can feel free to call the school, the mental health department, right? And they should know that, that they can call if they see any signs at home to get help with their child in school.
Absolutely.
So, if a parent does call you, and they have, and they see something is, is wrong, or something that's not quite right, how do you direct the parent? How do we, we address that?
So, like Ms. Rivera said, our school counselors on the campus are going to be our first point of contact for anything related to our school-based mental health. They're the folks on the school site to address these concerns. What parents or guardians could, would do then is, you know, once they call, that school counselor would talk to the, the family about the concerns, you know, what are their concerns? What do we have to offer here in school? They would also talk with the other members of their mental health team, so their social worker, their mental health counselor, psychologist. And they, as a team, with the parents' input, work on, okay, so what are, what type of intervention are we gonna provide? How are we gonna intervene? Who's gonna, who is going to provide that service? And that's how we proceed. We, I think there's a lot of different ways we get the information out there. We talk to parents, and, and we'll talk more about this with the, with our Tier One information, but in terms of awareness and activities around awareness, we are always sharing that information. I sometimes get phone calls, because I think parents just go to our district website and go to the, the Student Services page and see mental health, and they get my name, and so they'll call me. And say, or email me sometimes and say, you know, my student needs help with this, how can I get them counseling? And then I will work with the school, direct them, you know, I contact the school on the behalf of the parent to, to get that, that started.
And if another student sees that, that there's something is wrong with another student? How do they, can you talk in that form, like, is that something that's coming up?
Yeah, same thing, talk to their school counselor, and we're always sharing that information as well with students about how to report anything, truly. But it's always gonna be talk to their school counselor as the first point of contact.
Any more questions, more, before we move on?
I guess I have a question, comment, but, so, I'm looking at the young adult or middle adult, which I would, in between those categories, would be a, a teacher or, or, or support staff, you know? And positive mental health will be, you know, you can read for yourself, life, the stressors would be your job, parenting, caregiving, and relationships. So, as a teacher, when I look at the six evident-based strategies, support staff well-being is something that you touched on, Dr. Gillard, Gillard. So, you know, putting on your mask is so much, is so very important, that our teachers are, are taken care of, that they, we, we, we protect them, that they, we give them all the tools that they need to be able to, to support the students. So, taking care of them, making sure that their mask is on first, I think is so important. And then we can take care of, is that something coming up, you know?
It is, yes.
So, I, I.
Dr. Wild's gonna talk more specifically about that, although I will say that analogy about putting our mask on is one that we actually use in our mental health first aid classes, where that's, that's literally what we talk about, is you have to be able to put your mask on first before you can help someone else. So, I appreciate that, because that's something that, that we teach, every time we teach mental health first aid.
I'll wait with my question.
Okay. Okay. So, we're gonna talk more specifically about the services that are provided by our mental health team, but this is just a, a listing of those. So, again, direct counseling services, working on awareness, those universal interventions like mental health first aid, and suicide prevention, and then always responding to crisis. We're gonna talk about that as well. So, Tier One, those are the universal supports that are available to everyone, and it really does start with awareness. And we, we talk a lot about mental health first aid, and that's a course for the, the adults, but it's also building mental health awareness in the schools. And that's done a variety of ways. So, we have awareness stay. So we have awareness days, we'll have classroom lessons, we have our mental health, school-based mental health counselor team creates newsletters, they did that, that was a really great one last year. We focus a lot during May, because it is Mental Health Awareness Month, but it's truly done throughout the year. So for example, October is Bullying Prevention and Awareness Month, so activities will be going on during the month of October as well. Tier one also includes suicide prevention, and that is a required component of the resiliency curriculum in grades six to 12. We have been implementing SOS, Signs of Suicide. It's a curriculum for suicide prevention, and we've been doing that in all ninth-grade classes throughout the district since 2016. That is something I'm really proud of, that we have been that consistent in implementing that program. As part of that, it is school-led, so the teachers provide the instruction, and then our mental health professionals do what we call follow-up. So as part of the instruction, the students fill out an exit ticket, and it simply says, "Do I need to talk to a counselor, or do I want my friend to talk to a counselor?" Essentially, it's getting to that part about, you know, what if a friend, if you notice your friend needing help. So then the mental health professionals, school counselors, as well as our school-based mental health counselors, social workers, psychologists, follow up with each student who has indicated that either they need to talk to someone, or they think a friend needs to talk to someone. And that occurs within 24 hours of that instruction, because we know that that request has been made, because the students have been exposed to the suicide prevention curriculum. And so we want to make sure we are responding timely to that as well. The other component of our universal supports that we want to talk about and really highlight is youth mental health first aid. This is another initiative that I am really, really proud of. So we have been teaching mental health first aid here in St. Lucie Public Schools since 2015, and that is well before the DOE enacted the requirements for us to teach it. So we were on the forefront of that. We could not do this without our 21 trainers who instruct in that program, and actually there's a class going on right now, today, down the hall. Some of our trainers are in the room with us today. It's a pretty significant time commitment, so I'm very grateful to them as well. The DOE requires that we have each year, that we're able to certify that we have 80% of required staff trained, and I'm excited to say that as of right now, we already have surpassed that requirement, and we can't report until the spring. So we're already at 83%, and we have multiple sessions each month throughout the year. So that's only going to continue to grow. So that's, that really is, it's an accomplishment for us. Any questions about the tier one supports that we're providing? All right, for tier two, again, that's for smaller groups of students, and so we're talking about things like group counseling. It might be about anxiety, depression, coping skills, social skills. It also includes the opportunity to work with a mentor in our behavior intervention classrooms, where students are being reflective around their behaviors. And then we have our tier three supports, and those are our more intensive supports. So again, this is one-on-one instruction or intervention typically. So individual counseling, again, topics vary depending on the student's needs. We're also completing suicide risk assessments at this level, and those are always done by a trained, certified, and trained mental health professional. The tool we use to complete that is called the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale, and it's one of the DOE-approved measures that we are using. The other component of our suicide risk assessments that is important to know is that we are providing additional training for our staff, so that they are more comfortable and able to provide these suicide risk assessments. We know it's a very specific skill set, and so we want to continue to grow the skills of the individuals who are providing them. So we do that through two ways. One is through QPR, which is Question, Persuade, Refer. And that training really is for anyone who wanted to attend, and it does exactly what it says. So it's about how to ask the question around suicide, how to talk to someone about getting help, and how to refer them to the appropriate professionals. And then Question, Persuade, Refer, T, or QPRT adds on the treat component, which is the intervention component, or having those therapeutic conversations. And that training includes a lot of role-play, so that we're really working through how to have those conversations in a way that is most helpful for the young person. Tier three supports also sometimes include connecting our young people with psychiatric assessments through that Baker Act process. So when we're doing that, we are always following our DOE requirements for completing the suicide risk assessments and recommendations for Baker Acts, which includes involving our mobile response team when the parent or guardian is in agreement with that. We also are collecting data all along the way to make sure that we have a sense of what is, what's going on in our schools. So schools are reporting this two ways. We have a district reporting form, where they report each suicide risk assessment and Baker Act that occurs from a school or school activity. And then we're also completing our DOE-required reporting. So I've included a little bit of data for the last two years, and what we've seen from, for those two years, is that we had a slight decrease in the number of suicide risk assessments, but our Baker Acts from school or school activities did remain the same for the, basically the same for those two years. Questions about that part? So when students need mental health supports that are more intensive than we can be providing in schools, we would refer them through what's called our Mental Health Collaborative. And those are community agencies that we partner with to refer students with parent permission to a community agency. So when we're making that referral, again, on behalf of the family, the parent or guardian gives us permission to do so. And part of the reason we are helping facilitate that is to be able to remove barriers to access for students. We know sometimes it's just honestly hard for families to access counseling services in the community. And so being able to be that conduit between the family and the agency is incredibly helpful. The other component of that with barrier reduction is utilizing funding for students who do not have insurance. So we do provide funding for counseling services for students who do not have health insurance to be able to pay for it, because that is a significant barrier to access. Part of the communication with the agencies also includes really building these relationships, and we have built really solid relationships with our community agency partners, and it's helpful for a few reasons. One is, again, reducing access to barriers. It helps with continuity of follow-up, and sometimes that's as simple as, you know, helping, reminding a family member, a parent, or guardian that their child has an appointment with a community provider. But sometimes it's more intensive, what we call care coordination, where all of the community agencies come together at the same time to talk about what's going on and how to, again, to remove those barriers. We also are following up with, again, if parents are providing permission, release of information, following up, following a hospitalization for a student, so that we can better assist in schools and know what that child might need upon return to school. So here's our agencies that we have with those, the partnerships we have with those community mental health agencies, and we have increased the number of agencies in our Mental Health Collaborative the last couple of years, which I think also has allowed us to remove some barriers, because students have access to more and more options for community-based mental health counseling, whether it's just location-wise, or, you know, if it's, we want to make sure that there's somebody available in each part of the county for access purposes, but also insurance. We have to, they don't all take the same kind of insurance. So we want to make sure we're connecting them with an agency that they would be able to access, essentially. And then finally, we talk about crisis response, and we do respond in times of crisis. Typically speaking, if a student or staff, if there's been a death of a student or staff, our student services staff is going to respond to the school to provide the grief support in the immediate aftermath. What that looks like in terms of response is going to vary depending on the age and grade of the student, as well as the incident. But broadly speaking, we're talking with those students and staff who are most impacted, classmates, teachers, et cetera. And then we also are, allow for opportunity for them to speak individually with us. So we might go to a classroom, but then we have a place where we're stationed in the school, so that we can have teachers or staff come to us, so for a more individualized session. And then as part of that, if there need to be community referrals to agencies like Hospice, which is truly the gold standard in our community in terms of crisis response, or grief counseling, then we would facilitate those referrals as well. Any questions about that part? Nope, okay. Ms. Rivera?
Similarly to all the other areas in St. Lucie Public Schools, we look at data very closely. And just to caveat, before we start, I just want to let you know, some students do participate in both individual and group counseling, and I'll explain why that's important. So we have about 1,331 students that received counseling services last year. 966 students participated in ongoing individual counseling, and 430 students participated in group counseling. But again, students can participate in both group and individual, hence why the number would not add up to 1,331. I also want to say that 239 students were referred for mental health counseling based on those community agencies that Dr. Gillard just shared with us. And again, we're extremely proud that we have partnered with 10 agencies, and they speak different languages as well to assist students and families with their mental health needs, when it extends past the scope of the school setting. And in answering some of your questions, how do students, how do parents know about all the amazing work that we are doing for mental health? Obviously, we have Dr. Gillard providing mental health services through the school district website. Schools are also providing welcome packets and handbooks. We have a small newsletter from our mental health team, as well as emails. We have our school counselors providing presentations. We have a nurse school psychologist leading groups. So they are definitely extremely involved, assemblies, staff meetings, and PD days, of course, internal communications. But ultimately, the referral form, if any parent is interested in having their child receive counseling services, please speak with your school counselor, fill out the form, and we will definitely provide that for you. Does anyone have any questions before we move on to Dr. Wild and her support for staff?
So I heard the data about you did less referrals, but your Baker Acts remained the same. Do you have comparative data to before you implemented this program? What difference is this making?
Yes, and we definitely do. We could definitely pull that and provide that to the school board. I don't want to give you numbers off the top of my head, just because the school district has grown tremendously, and I want to make sure that's relative to the school district population increase.
I would be interested in seeing the data, comparison data, to the difference that these programs are making.
Yes. Any other questions?
I have a question about funding. The school provides funding. What kind of funding? How does that work?
Funding, can you specify a little bit about the question?
It's something...
About the agencies?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we do have funding put aside through our mental health allocation plan for agencies for students who do not have the financial means or insurance. We do provide sessions for the students to be able to see a counselor, so that way funding would never be a barrier to them receiving services. Outside of the school system, for those agencies. But then we also have our direct providers that are here, our school counselors that are certified, our mental health counselors, our school social workers, and our school psychologists, that also provide counseling services to our students, free of cost.
Okay, is there a limit to the amount of sessions?
Sessions. So, you know, based on research, based on, you know, our studies, it's a total of about 10 sessions, but obviously, each student's individual, it's individual growth for each student. So if it needs to extend past that, the school will be communicating with Dr. Gillard, the agencies will be communicating with Dr. Gillard, and we can approve it. But again, it's all based on individual student needs.
And now, I, with, with mental health, it's, it's, do we have enough professionals on hand to be able to... Okay, let me ask it this way. I'm asking, I'm getting ahead of myself, right? So, okay, I'll wait again. I'll wait. It's okay, go ahead.
Yes, Dr. Wild will definitely address that in her presentation. So at this time, we are concluding our student portion and passing it over to Dr. Wild. I apologize, we have one more great video to show you.
Recommend it to other students if they really need it.
I would recommend it if they really need it.
I would recommend it for all students, and in fact, our guidance counselor sends out emails yearly advising us to send them students that we think would benefit from the services.
I would absolutely recommend school-based counseling for other students. It has been absolutely amazing for my child, and I know that it's also helped other students in our school.
All right, good morning. Madam Chair, Superintendent Prince, Board Members, I'm happy to be here to continue this topic, which is near and dear to my heart. I think most of you know that I am a certified school counselor. It is where I started my career in St. Lucie Public Schools. It's still absolutely one of my highest priorities, and making sure that our mental health professionals are well-trained, up-to-date, and know exactly what resources are available for our students is such a high priority. And the questions you've asked so far have been right on point, and I'm so glad you asked that last one, Mrs. Richardson, because the answer to that question is sort of a yes and no, if I'm being perfectly honest. We went through a number of years with severe shortages in the number of mental health professionals that are and were available. And I think it was the double dose of fewer people going into the field, combined with the COVID years, where there was a lot of dollars out there in the private sector, as well as the public sector, and everybody was looking to hire certified mental health professionals. It was at that time that we knew that we needed to get very creative to establish more of a workforce in this arena, and that is when we partnered with Florida Atlantic University, received a federal mental health grant, and started the SWEL program. The SWEL program was designed to encourage teachers to become certified school counselors, because becoming a certified school counselor or a licensed professional is a lot more than going through youth mental health first aid training. There is, you know, some real science behind it, and there's a lot to learn in becoming a certified or licensed professional. So we've established that partnership, which was to allow us to have a minimum of 75 individuals to become school counselors. And I, it's one of my proudest initiatives that we have ever done, because 70% of our current school counselors graduated from SWEL. So, and there's some in the audience, I think I see Dominique's here.
Yep, yep, a couple.
Yeah, we've got more than one. So if you think about 70% of the school counselors we have went through that program, what would we have done without it? So it has put us in a really good position. And the other, the other fields we do, of mental health, we do have adequate staff, we do have enough to meet the need right now, and they are doing such an amazing job. I'm so proud of the work that they do. And your question about how do you, what makes a student go from tier one to tier two to tier three is also right on point, because the tier one work, that's happening every single day in all of our schools. It's when a counselor is teaching safer, smarter kids. It's when counselors are going into high school classrooms and explaining what they do for kids. That's tier one, it happens every day. Tier two is when a student says, "Hey, counselor, I would like to meet with you," and they do counseling on a short term. Those are not reflective of those numbers that you saw earlier, where they'll do a session with a student, make sure they're okay, they might check in with them three times a week for a little while. Now that student is in tier two, and all of a sudden, something happens, and that student is cutting or threatening suicide, or doing any number of the behaviors that our teachers are learning to identify through youth mental health first aid. And that's going to propel a student into tier three right away. While we've been sitting here, we had the mobile While we've been sitting here, we had the mobile crisis team go out to a school, because we get those notifications. So it's a fluid process, every day, every professional is doing all three of those on a daily basis. So I wanted to expand a little bit on that great information that you got earlier. And it's already been said, and then with the analogy of the adults putting on their mask first, the well-being of our workforce, the mental health of our workforce is essential for our students. And first and foremost, foremost, how we get there is by providing a positive culture first. Every school, every department needs to establish a positive culture where people trust each other, where people share concerns if they see it in a peer or a colleague, and either encourage that individual to ask for help themselves, or let someone know that they see signs that someone needs help. And what I see is that with all of our adults now going through youth mental health first aid training, people are becoming more aware of what to look for, because the same signs are true with adults. So we are seeing more and more of that. But in addition, we also have, outside of the services you already heard about, we also have an employee assistance program that is available to our employees, and I'm going to share that with you. And then we also do have times where even through the HR department, we will require an individual go for an exam, which could be mental health or physical health, to determine that they should be around kids at that time. So that's in the most serious cases when it goes to our Department of Employee Relations and HR. Our team that you heard about primarily focuses on students. The school psychologists, school social workers, and school counselors are here for our students, but there are times when they are working with our adults, and those are the times that you are always made aware of. It's when we have to send the crisis team out to a school. There's very few incidents that don't also affect the adults. If we're talking about a death of a colleague, or a student, or an accident, or even the tornadoes. When those things happen, they affect everybody, our youth and our adults. And those psychologists who are licensed do provide services on the spot at the school or department where they are needed. The employee assistance program is a program that we have had, it's part of our insurance package, and we are really going to double down on getting the word out about this program and access to this program. We do have a wellness program that offers incentives to our employees to take care of themselves, and a lot of times that starts with physical health, getting enough exercise, eating properly, preventing disease, quitting smoking, taking care of diabetes. All of those things can also bleed over into individuals' mental health, and so we incentivize our employees to do those things. They actually get a discount on their health insurance when they participate. The employee assistance program is available to all of our employees and their dependents, and that's a part that I think some people don't know. And this service is available to people who are experiencing any types of difficulties, whether it be job-related or personal, it doesn't matter, they can access these services. And one of the barriers is that sometimes people fear that services that are at all related to their workplace may not stay confidential. But this, this intervention is strictly confidential for the employees. It's all part of what is called our Resources for Living program. And Resources for Living, like I said, is available to our employees and their children up to the age of 26, and it does not require medical insurance coverage. So we're not just talking about our employees who, who take our insurance. It's any employee, whether or not they are covered with our insurance. Some of the services are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And those services fall under the unlimited toll-free telephonic access, but those are 24 hours a day, but they are handled by licensed behavioral health professionals, not the ones you see in this room. These are actually contracted professionals out in the community, providing the service and support for our employees. This program also includes six face-to-face counseling sessions, and I know a lot of our employees do know that they could access six face-to-face counseling sessions, but I'm not sure if they always realize that it's per issue, per year, per issue, per year. So that could equate to more than six sessions a year if somebody needed that. Again, they're through licensed network professionals and at no cost to our employees. We also have web-based tools. This is more on the preventative side and the self-assessment side of mental health, which is, which is also extremely important. You may not be able to see all the details in these charts, so I want to just give you a broad overview of what this part is about. We have a health insurance committee, which I know you all have heard about when we talk about our health insurance benefits, but part of the health insurance committee's role is to receive quarterly reports from our, our providers. So we get quarterly and annual reports as to access to the programs. So this is an example of what we would get at the end of the year. It's broken up into quarters, and I circled that 521 actual people year-to-date received some of these services, whether it's general counseling services, legal and financial services, there's a few more than just counseling. I'll get into that and elaborate on that in just a moment. In addition to that nature of the report, just how many people are accessing it, we also get a breakdown of who is accessing it, not by name, all confidential, and by whether or not it's the employee or the dependent. So you can see in the bottom left-hand corner, the dark green is the employee themselves, the lighter green is whether or not their dependents are accessing it. You can also see what types of things they are self-identifying that they are going for. Am I looking for help with anxiety, relationships, stress? Lots of different topics you can see there. Sorry, I wanted to go back to that one for just a minute. So you could take a look at it and see what types of topics they are accessing. The bottom is an age group breakdown, so you can see the various age bands that are getting services. We also take a look at how are they saying they heard about this benefit? And you can see a lot of people say that they were self-referred, so they may have known about the benefit since they first started working here. It is, it is introduced when they get hired in their onboarding, and so if they're saying they're self-referred, they've always known about it, but this year I decided to access it. That's probably what they mean, because they are self-identifying this.
Okay, really quickly.
Sure.
I see at the top it says from January 2024 to December 2024. Is it year-to-date, this year-to-date?
This is last year's data.
So then what's year-to-date?
For this particular slide, it'd be the whole year, but we get it quarterly. So it's cumulative throughout the year. I just pulled a full one. So this year, we'll get our first one. It will say year-to-date on the right, and then when they add the next quarter, that year-to-date will change, and the next quarter, and the next quarter. That change is quarterly. So the year-to-date is added straight across.
So year-to-date is 2025.
24, 25, yep.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yes, thank you. And so you can see 17% were referred by HR, a family member might have referred them, that would in large part be the children, the dependents.
So prior year-to-date then would be to 2025, so it would be 621 or 601? I really can't see. So we're down by 80 people.
It's not prior, I believe it's potential, and I think they're using averages. That's important when you're going through quarterly. End of the year, I'm not sure why it's a little higher. It's not year-to-year.
Okay.
I have the previous year's data, though. I do have the previous year data, so I could track whether it's up or down. I just didn't pull that for this presentation.
Yeah, that's what would be interesting.
Yeah, I could certainly pull that.
Ms. Hawley, I don't hear you.
Which, which particular, the question was, are these unduplicated numbers, which particular chart? This one here, presenting issues? These are by service, so somebody could be doing counseling referral and also do a work life, so I don't believe they're unduplicated. Okay, so moving forward, this report here is specifically to counseling, and you can see that 54% of the people did the face-to-face, 45 did the telehealth. And if you look on the right, you can see the age distribution of each. So in the middle there, you see the face-to-face. It's a, in my age group, you can see it's a little higher for face-to-face, younger people, it's a little higher with tele, teledoc services, online services. And then you can see for what types in the very center there. And I know you can probably read that better on your handout. The average individual, and Mrs. Richardson asked this question before when it came to students, how many sessions? It does vary. So it really depends on the person, the person's response to the intervention, in this case counseling, and whether or not the counselor thinks that additional sessions are needed. But on average, 3.9 sessions are needed overall. It's a little higher in face-to-face with 4.5 and 3.4 when it is accessed online. And this is all last year's. Also, relationships, when people say that they're going to talk about relationships, it's broken up into several categories, but it is the largest one, 38.8% chose relationships as their reason for being there. On the preventative side, we also have an app, and this particular app is, is brand-new to us. So I don't have any data on accessing this yet, but this is the Me Equilibrium app that is available to our employees. This is announced through our wellness newsletter, at our health fairs, and so forth, and this is where people can do self-assessments, they can monitor how they're feeling, they can monitor certain symptoms that they may be feeling, to know when they need to access additional support. Also, our wellness department did work with the Office of Teaching and Learning to add some professional learning online on-demand, and so the Office of Teaching and Learning worked with Mark in our risk management department, who was going to be here with us today, but he is actually at a health fair at Transportation today, which he does throughout the district throughout the year. The additional resources for living that are available for folks are not necessarily related to counseling, but they're, they're legal services that people can access, which is on the same website as part of our employee assistance planning. They can receive financial services, theft and fraud services, and online will services. And they can combine the online will services with the legal services to, to do their will or do some estate planning, and that is free for all employees. And so that wraps up today's presentation, except for one last round of questions. But before we do wrap that up, I do want to thank everyone who participated today, everyone who came to be part of the audience. They are literally representing the best mental health professionals in the state of Florida, as Dr. Prince would say. Any other questions?
Any other questions, Board Members?
I guess I don't necessarily have a question, I mean, questions, but I would like to say how important mental health is.
Yes.
Especially, I want to say, in today's climate, in today's world, you know, and how I really appreciate the emphasis that we are putting on, on, on mental health and even identifying, just being able to identify without being told or somebody coming to you, you know, for us to be cognizant of, you know, our, our surroundings and our staff and our children, you know, because I can tell you, I'm just going to say this, that when I go to the supermarket, that's a mental health issue for me. Okay? So I'm just saying, you know, so it is, it's not just, you know, you know, like suicidal or whatever, it's just, just breathing, just living.
Stressors.
Anymore, you know, so I, I really appreciate all our mental health professionals and the job that you do for our children or students every day and for our staff, you know, so much appreciated, more than you'll ever know, because of how important it is. It's a very silent disease, you know, we, we, the young lady, this little girl, her coping skill, talking or breathing or whatever, you know, just learning basic coping skills, you know, and, you know, just to be able to, I don't know, live anymore, it's important. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'd like to close out in thanking everyone that came out, the presenters, as well as all of our mental health employees and prevention, and everything that was said today was so enlightening and informative, information was given. I, myself, did not realize that we had so many employee mental health and wellness programs out there. And as has been said by Ms. Richardson, how important it is, many of us don't like to talk about it, but we do need what we have for our employees and to hear that they don't have to have insurance with us, you know, just being an employee, that all of these services are available. I'm sure there's many that don't realize that, and it makes no difference what your job title is or, you know, what type of work you do within the district. If you're an employee, please take advantage of what we have here, because you don't have to suffer alone. You really don't, so take advantage of that. I might even take up a couple of them myself. I'm an employee as well, you know, but thank you so much, and, and the presentation was very, as I said, very informative. I want to also thank the community for passing that referendum, because a lot of this that we are doing is a result of, of the vote and the referendum being passed, and we would not be able to do and address to the extent that we are doing and addressing here in this district in so many areas of what we're doing. So thank you for your vote and your support for the referendum, not just with mental illness, but in every area. We're able to do, have more teachers, we're able to have more counselors, you know, because of the tax dollars and your approval. So we thank you for that. Board Members, if there's no more discussion on the topic, again, we thank each of our, our employees and our staff that you do so much every day for our children and for our adults as well. Thank you to each of you, we appreciate you. We are adjourned.